This thing, or did we just dive in? Sorry, we're getting started a little bit late. I'll call us into session. This is, of course, is work session, so we'll move right through the agenda. On the next meeting, we'll have representatives from the sixth district, invocation by Chris Gregory, and pleas to claim by Judy Kerr. Of course, Ms. Rita will... I'm sorry? Sorry. Sorry, I'm just reading from my script. I stand corrected, okay? I can... You all know why six was afraid of seven, don't you? Seven, eight, nine, right? Okay, Ms. Crowder will read the roll call on that day. The minutes will be covered. Announcements will be made of the budget hearings which have been moved to the... To the May first through the fourth. We'll have approval of amendments to the agenda. Do any of those need to be explained tonight, or we do that then? The amendments?
They're being added right now.
Okay, so we'll give an explanation then? Okay, we'll have a citizen's response to agenda items. Then I'll have the county mayor's report. And let me point out that I'll give a full report the next commission meeting, and if you have any specific topics that you'd like for me to cover, please get in touch with me before next week, and I'll address those at that time. We'll have committee reports, and then, yes?
Other members of the agenda, I probably need with the public works on that, recommended changing the fees on the roll call. But I thought we heard Cliff's. I meant to get her already on there. I thought Cliff had about changing the fees on that one. We bring it from the whole county commission.
Okay, so we can make that as a budget amendment at that time?
It'll be a resolution.
A resolution.
Resolution. Got you. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll have committee reports, and active business will be resolutions, and do we need to talk about those one at a time? Okay, the first one will be the THDA home grant program. And that is similar to the CBDG grant, as I understand it. Is that the one that's in the amount of 700,000 that we'll be applying for?
Correct. So this is the 2023 THDA home grant. We did one back in 2018 that helps the low-income housing rehabilitation. Of course, we do not know who will be selected for this one. We will have a public if you allow us to apply for it, and if we are receiving of it, we will have a public hearing for the community to come and learn how to apply for it and who would be able to apply for it. So, but this is just giving us permission to apply for the grant itself.
Yes, sir.
Quick question there on applying for the grant. Who's doing that application work?
So, we normally use Vantage Consulting, which is Bay Leonard. She has a lot of experience with the home grants and the CBG grants.
And that CBDG grant, that was like the 500,000 dollar grant that was gonna change like six or seven homes? I'm sorry? This one's amount 700,000 on this.
And it is a fully funded grant, but it is also a reimbursing grant, so we have to spend the money to get the money.
Any questions on that? On the next one, which is Resolution 2023-1178 involving a wheel tax, Mr. Beller, would you bring us up to speed on that one?
First of all, I want to just say this. I don't need to be talking about wheel taxes. It's something that is a fun thing for commissioners and deputies. I've represented Smith County formerly, and now, y'all now. It's not a topic that we like to discuss, but as you're all aware, we have projects, several projects that are on the horizon. The one that's been the foremost topic here lately is a jail. Of course, we know that at some point you got to fund that, and it's not a... It's not an easy project to fund, particularly with all the pricing and materials. Some of you are well aware, we've met with engineering several times. So, one of the things I just want to go over with, what you have in your package, folks, is I don't want to be an alarmist or anything like that. That is something that I have put together and asked Ms. Amy to put in your pack. To give you an idea, some of you have never gone through the wheel tax process before. And so, it's not a proposal... I don't think they're active business, but it's not a proposal for you to act on any time soon. It's just something for discussion, and I'm going to get to that in just a moment. This is a... Your two options that the county commission is founding are basically coordinated by 812, that's the privilege tax, motor vehicle tax section. So, it's each county is empowered to lay for the county purposes by actions governing body, and motor vehicle privilege tax is condition precedent to the operation of a motor vehicle within the county. So, actually, in its essence, it's a privilege tax. The tax may be laid on any motor vehicle taxable by the state. The law requires we impose this tax, and that's the... It has to be done by resolution, though. I know your charter says it has to be... There's a taxable taxing authority legislation that's been done by ordinance. I've researched this issue. Where your charter or your state, if that's a code annotated conflict, the force goes to the plain meaning of the statute. The plain meaning of the statute, the language that is used in this code section is resolution. And in fact, throughout the body, it is only the first a resolution. And even on top of that, even mechanism by which a wheel tax is passed is different than the way it is that our stated in our charter. So, those two conflicting provisions were... The legal conclusion is they're spelled by resolution. Motor vehicle tax imposition, no resolution authorizes such motor vehicle privilege tax. It'll take effect unless approved by two-thirds vote of the county legislative body. In other words, if there's a majority, then two consecutive regular scheduled meetings, that's one option, or unless it is approved by a majority of a number of qualified voters that count the voting in an election on the question of whether or not the tax should be laid. So, two mechanisms. One, you can put it to referendum, or two, you can decide. And at that point, if you decide, then the voter electorate, if they decide to do so, that they can petition by the number of registered voters, 10% of the votes of the last gubernatorial election in the county, and pull it and have it done by referendum, depending which election position involves. There's a separate process there. But nonetheless, it is something that we have discussed, I think. It's been brought up, or since I'm under my tenure, I think we've had discussions about this topic for the last three years. I have asked for Ms. Rita to provide certain figures, and we think these figures are sound projected. But the estimates on each one, I'll just give you some arbitrary figures. The hundred-dollar tax, wheel tax amounts, 930,000 dollars. A seventy-dollar, 651,000. A fifty-dollar, 469,000. So, these are all figures that are there. We can keep copies of these to everyone. I think at this point, I think just my recommendation, just for you in light of just... This is a discussion, and I don't just decide where you want to go with it. You want to bring it up in workshop, or, you know, set a special meeting. You have to tell those finance committee the process by which you study this and make the decision on it. It's on. It die with, no one's speaking on it. I wanted to bring this up because I've been asked several, by several commissioners individually. I've had discussions with several of you, so I just took the bull by the horns and said, here you are. So, that's it. If anyone has any questions, they'll have to answer that. Normally, I don't do this. Yes, sir. Mr. Crook?
So, who was the ones that came to you to draw this up?
Don't make it a minute to tell me to draw it up. I initiated this on my own to say...
But you came up with the...
I'll do this. Again, it's just a smorgasbord, okay? With different figures, different thought processes, and it's just to get an idea. I think I drafted maybe four different ones. So, that's the one I sent. I can send several different grants if you'd like to do. It's just, I think one of them had 100% funding just for the jail. I think I had one for a referendum, and said, you know, to direct it over to a referendum. So, there's... You've got options. And for some of the things that in times past, we've had some that... We've had projects where they had a sunset provision, so I don't know. Those are all things that you have to consider when you're doing a wheel tax.
All right, I've actually got a few questions that I can ask.
Go ahead.
So, you brought up the sunset, so this particular resolution doesn't have the sunset?
No, it doesn't.
How much is it going to cost for the jail?
That is a good question, and I don't have an answer.
All right. How much will the payment be?
That is a good question, and I don't have an answer.
The reason why these questions I'm asking is because it's recorded, and when people out there get this presented to them, it looks shady. I know you don't do it that way, but when it's not got... How long does it take to pay off?
Doesn't have... It's stated in the resolution.
And this is going up for, by what it's stated, it's going up for us to vote on it and not?
Discussion stuff right now, not voted. And we've had these discussions with spirit architecture for several, for a while now. And had discussions with the building of the jail. You're well familiar with it. Sheriff's will familiar with it at some point. It's going to be brought up, so...
But we, honestly, from my standpoint, I'm just stating the facts of what we got right here. This cannot come to me personally and be approved because it's an open line. Yeah, we can pass the resolution all right, but if we pass this resolution, nine times out of 10, what's on this resolution is what's going to be. We're paying a hundred dollars from what it says. Of course, it's discussion. It's all discussion. I get it. But we can't go, I can't go, let me put this way. I can't go to my constituents and people in my district and say, hey, this is the resolution that the county is offering me. I have to vote on this, or we can send it to y'all. Of course, it's not down here anything about sending them anything.
There's another thought process for that, and that is this, that you go to your constituents and discuss it with them about what they desire and what they want, and bring it back to the table as part. This is not going to get on this year's... I'd be shocked if it did, all right? And first of all, you don't have, really don't have time. You're not going to discuss it in April. You've got May and June, and that's it. That's how we're going to pass this. And I wouldn't recommend that, but however, at some point, there's going to have to be a decision that's made on taxation issues. And this has given you, as your commissioner, the opportunity to speak with your constituents and come back about those designs, because, let's face it, there's going to be amongst this body here, you're going to have some folks that are going to want to go to this project or even a fund, and so there's going to be diversions of opinions everywhere. But this is the way we do it in Smith County, maybe not exactly like this, but we put it out there ahead of time to build a school.
Can I ask a few more?
Sure, go ahead.
I have talked to almost 90% probably of the district. It says here that it shall begin on the first day of July of 2023.
Arbitrary.
Right. So, when I go to them with this, this is what they look at. This is what they look at. I mean, when a wheel tax debate gets brought up, it should be brought up. We know what it's going to cost. We know what we have to do and pay for it. We know how much it's going to be. We know when it sunsets. We know how long it's going to take to pay for. It's for a specific project that was basically discussed just for our jail. This has money going to three different departments, and I'm pretty sure that none of the department heads, even, I expect one of them, even knew about this even being presented like this.
And I'm not discussing single take on any of those department heads about that particular part of this discussion.
You've answered all my questions.
That's the straight up...
I appreciate that.
Like a point, and you can do very well. The difference, if we don't want to build wheel tax, and we're 38% of people going to the money.
Well, that's always the funding mechanism. The revenue side, like sales tax, wheel tax, or property tax. And that's it. I mean, you can look to grants, and you can look to other sources, but as far as revenue streams and local government, those are the primary areas.
But you're only touching 38% of the people.
And there's always that debate. I've heard that for the last 25 years about that, what you're doing. There's things you can do, a combination there are, a combination of wheel tax, a combination of property tax, and a combination of sales tax. I've seen that as well. Those are all options that are available, all right? So, it's not just exclusively a wheel tax, so...
This will take all of you.
Mr. Thomas has one. Yes, sir.
So, so that I'm just completely clear, and for any clarification, this resolution was not brought before, coming before the commission to be voted on this month.
No.
It was brought just for a starting point for discussion.
We didn't put... This was not put in budget finance, so it didn't come out favorable or unfavorable recommendation. It's specifically for the whole body of workshop, because this is the only place that you can gather everybody together and have a frank discussion about an issue that looms in front of this commission at some point. There's going to be a decision that's made. Whether you don't make a decision or not, it's still a decision.
So, the purpose of this resolution, if we were to take to our constituents for discussion, is, okay, where are the points you don't like, and what are the things that you would like in there, correct?
You can take and find out what they want. You can take it for the decision. Any number of things. Project, a specific project, a specific fund. You know, people say, I don't want a wheel tax, but I have property tax, maybe. Maybe just others that have just the opposite statement. So, again, it is something that the governing body, it's a decision. We're all, you're going to have to think at some point. Our guys, yes, I can, and just relying on experience.
To follow up on Mr. Crook's point, like I said, we don't know what a jail will cost. The... We've had numbers thrown out there. We don't know if they're accurate. You know, 25 million has been thrown out there, annual payment of 2 million. With 50% of this, I mean, if it wound up going through as is, wheel tax ain't going to come close to paying for a jail. Even if we put 100% of this toward it, it's still not going to come anywhere near paying for it.
Keep in mind, we've got an administrative fee that we've not done a whole lot with, or said it. So, there's another, there are other structures that we have that...
300,000 dollars a year for five years, I mean, that's a...
Again, this is...
Part of it, but it's again, it's still not going to...
Hundred dollars is 930,000, what we believe. Sixty dollars is 558,000. Seventy dollars is 651,000. Those are the best projections we've got today. Mr. Thomas?
I figured that today, close, it ain't may not be at all, but it's close. Based on the 60, on the 50, 40, 10, it would take 37 cents on the tax rate more to come up to 2 million a year. And that's with the hundred-dollar wheel tax.
I'd be surprised if we buy any interest on it, because I know I sure don't...
One thing about it, you got to realize, if you go on property tax, 38% of people got to pay all that. If you go the other way, you've got, like we did the high school down there. Me and Matt Kirkson worked that out and put it for referendum and asked it. When we put it where it sunset, when it was paid off, May 31st, or whenever it was, it was paid off, wheel taxes, you know what to wait. But think about this, ladies and gentlemen. We've got a school right around the corner. It ain't far from it. We ain't just got to build a jail in the next few years. We're going to have to build a school or add on to it.
I do appreciate you clarifying, Mr. Beller, that this was only as a discussion point. Because I've had people react to me like, y'all can't vote on this?
Blame the lawyer, everybody else does. But I do have good news for everybody in the executive session, where everybody lasts that long tonight. Mr. Kelly?
As I was looking at the numbers you mentioned, the numbers you're talking about there, I know Wes Rokesen met with us in, with the Budget and Finance Committee in December, I believe, and stated that on the projected 25 million, you said the numbers thrown out, what had been given to him was, this is what the projected jail cost would be, was 25 million dollars. He came back and stated, at the current rate, that would be a $2 million per year payment. And that was Wesley telling us upfront. Wesley said to us, we asked Wesley, the mayor asked Wesley to come meet with Finance Committee and give us some avenues, is what he asked. One of the avenues he mentioned was the sales tax, rate increase on the sales tax. One of the mentions was a wheel tax. The other is a property tax. Those are pretty much the revenue streams that this county has to be in front of. If I figured it out, you mentioned the 300,000. With that current piece, that's about 765,000 dollars right now, if this were to go into place. That would be going towards that jail. Does that cover the 2 million? No. Well, it's starting to get a link towards it. What's perfect, I don't know. But what I do know is we are faced with some challenges that we're going to have to look at and take on. You know, when you chose to be elected to this seat, you chose to realize that there was going to be some challenges coming our way. And I'll tell you, for the last five years I've been on this commission, I've heard it every year. We've made it by not increasing property tax five years in a row, but it's been very tight budgets, time over time over time. I do think this county spends its money very diligently and tries to be very... You know, we spent in the last budget meeting, the reason we were late in time was because, getting this started, was because there was a lot of discussion about a few items of money spending. I think, and I hope each and every member here is very diligently thinking about how dollars are spent, and I commend you on that piece, thinking about how we're going to spend our taxpayer dollars, because that's our job setting in this place. It's not easy. We are facing some very hard decisions in the very near future, something to get on our thought. I don't like the talks, and I know people don't like thinking about a hundred dollars. When I went and looked at it, I honestly was just sitting there yesterday pumping gas in my truck out here, and it cost me 120 bucks to fill up the truck. Actually, it was 118. I don't like it, but, you know, I can drive on for a little while. It is a large number, but we're talking about final numbers that we got to be looking at. I appreciate Mr. Beller for being willing to... It's been going around in conversations, two years, a year ago, this conversation was happening and saying, hey, we need to get some officials talking about it. Need to get something moving, need to get something moving. There was actually discussion, do we not let the other one sunset? So, this thing has not just been thrown at you. It was, it's been a piece that's been in play for quite a while. So, we've got, we're faced with some heavy pieces, not sure if we can get that 25 million dollars deal down to a different number.
Into Commissioner Crook's point, the one that's involved with regarding the payment and the financing. There are other options that we have, and without going into over too much detail, speaking without knowledge, but I believe that there may be some USDA, maybe some options. I don't know, Mr. Robertson spoke of that, but maybe some full year options versus some of them to do that, and maybe lock in a little different rate. But those are things that still have to be discussed and have to be looked at before the decisions are ever made. But however, I expect, and just given where we are with any date now, we'll be having at least some more solid and concrete numbers as it, the projected project. So, again, not to offend public sensibilities, because I understand that it's a hard task that you each got to have, and at some point, this discussion needed to take place. Again, I'm here to assist and do whatever I can to guide this body as best I can, and it's whatever the wishes are of this body. Mr. Thomas?
I would like to point out that as we all went through our orientation when we first became commissioners, they gave you that list of what has to be state mandated, it has to be funded. A jail is on that list, ambulances are not, but a jail is on that list.
Anything further from anyone? Again, if anybody wants to sit down and talk with me, Mr. Thomas?
We had some meetings, I believe it's last year, with NRC, and they got a study. 1.7 billion dollars goes out of this county every day, which should be spent here, that is out of the county.
That's going back to his question, he talked about the revenue streams. When's the last time we had a sales tax conference?
We tried to...
It's in the presentation. You know, if we're going to have to have money, revenue streams for the jails, we're also going to have to have some for education. It's all a presentation, because everybody buys their goods. The majority of people buy their goods in Sonder County and Wilson County. They're already paying that rate. But they'll, well, I ain't going to have, we ain't going to vote for that here. We need the revenue.
And to your point, that is exactly what Smith County pays, you know, with a combination of sales tax increases that calculated.
So, it doesn't go on the shoulders of homeowners?
Exactly, and so you can spread it out.
Absolutely.
But again, these are topics that we, in order to get everyone informed as to the law, to the one and options that are available.
You know, the constant voting down of the sales tax, it's, I have to believe that people would come and sense it's got to be in the presentation. You know, if you're just going to say, we're going to hit you with the tax, they're going to say, help me with your time.
Just speaking on that sales tax piece of conversation, if I remember it correctly, that was roughly 300,000 dollars that was talked about, and it's speaking, so that's 150,000, the school, 180,000. It's 150,000, that's the rate we don't have. It's 150,000 we don't have. But it's a small hill and a pretty easy attainable piece. It's not going to feel that hard on the body.
No, every, if we have pieces like that coming from everywhere, so to speak, it'll build it up.
And we could even go up to 150 dollars.
You can go up to 500 dollars if you want to. I'll let you...
Thank you, Mr. Beller. Any other questions?
Yeah, I still got something I got to do. I knew this other decision was coming, and I knew it had to be done. It's all about, I'm going to go with what Lon said, it's about the presentation of what we have in front of us. This right here, in my opinion, are we going to vote on this at any time?
No.
So, it's just in here, just for...
I requested it be placed on that agenda, so I could have this conversation with the county commission, because there's been a lot of questions raised and discussions in this body with regard to wheel tax. And I just read the law when we went over this, about what your options were. You can do it through a resolution here. You can send my resolution to a referendum to the voter electorate if you want to do that. You have that option. You can pass it here, and they can pull it. It's, everybody knows that.
It's going to start somewhere.
It's going to start at some point if this body wants it to start, otherwise, it's just... You have something in front of you that you can work with, and then you've got some more information that you're armed with, and I understand that you've probably, maybe because being your employee, you follow this a little closer than some of the other commissioners, but I want to make sure that some of them will bawl into this conversation, particularly with regard to the jail that we have that's living in front of us.
Well, I was, that part of those town hall meetings that we had in 2020, you know, we... There was a lot of discussion. I knew this was going to come, but when it comes down to a wheel tax, I know the sales tax didn't pass, but most of the time during 2020, I believe, that was a sales tax increase. I think less than we tried to pass this town. It got sent out in a red and white flyer, hey, increase the sales tax, or no, don't do it. You know, people, if they're going to go to the ballot box, and all they've seen is this increase of sales tax, well, it didn't say nothing. It didn't tell them what they're paying for. We can't go to the bank and build a house. You see what I'm saying? They are the bank. We are the people coming to need the money. And we have to present it in a way that, it just needs to go to them in a way, and everything in order, because this was confused. It was, it was. I mean, I get why you did it, because it needed to be talked about, and nobody's been talking about it. But when this got put on the agenda, it flared.
I'll make sure you get my sale numbers, so you can call me when you ask me anything.
I read the email. Chris actually made me pick it.
Anyone else?
Let me make a comment. I talked to Debbie Jenkins about wheel tax in conversation with her over the last six months, just as an agenda and just to learn something about it, and I understand that when, on the last one, that Pat Ferguson went to all the commissioners and all the districts, rolled it out to their people, they had meetings, like Halltown meetings, not Halltown. Town Hall.
There you go.
We could have one in Halltown, but they had these meetings to literally educate people on why and what we're doing, and so I think presentation is very important. Let's go to the next resolution, 2023-12781. Let's go to the next resolution, twenty twenty-three, twelve, seven eighty-one, ECD Road Buttercup Lane. Uh, it's the naming of the lane for emergency purposes. It does not designate it as a county maintained roadway. It's for the purpose of naming the lane. So that will come up in our next meeting. The litter grant, which is, Amy, you're going to tell us about this, twenty twenty-three, thirteen, seven eighty-two.
There's really not too much to say about it. It is an annual grant. It is administered by Jenny Gregory over at the Senior Center. And it's to pick up litter in the county. And there you go. It's, it's money that is designated for us. We normally get about forty-four thousand, two hundred every year.
Thank you. Uh, going to ordinances at the county, at the commission meeting, all before for public hearing for all ordinances up for the second reading. Yes, sir.
At our latest public works committee meeting, uh, public works voted to, uh, recommend that some additions authorize the mayor, uh, applying for, uh,
Built Environment.
Built Environment Grant. Yes, thank you that, uh, for, uh, for, uh, in, in, in the park. Will we be able to get something, uh, something back on?
So we can. And kind of a side note, there are some grants that require a resolution to authorize the mayor. And there are some grants that do not require that. And Built Environment is one of those that does not. But if the commission would like a resolution to have on file, we can do that. So go ahead and get one written up. I will get one going.
So we just need to, an amendment to the next.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll take care of that. Ms. My, Myhan, would you come to the podium on, on any of these second readings? If anyone has any questions on, there's no need to go through them line for line because we've seen them once before. But if you'll come up and be available to answer any questions. Any, any questions on any of these ordinances? Anyone that are coming up for second reading? Yes, sir.
Basically, it's kind of a federal demand. I mean, usually when we show, well, you know, you've got a package and you've got everything in the middle of the schedule, everything being added. It's not really enough time to go over everything, but. Have any of y'all went back and looked? This is basically a mission question. And looked, actually looked at the ordinance sixty-six, one, twelve, zero, two, that we are appealing. Because what has happened is we took a vote last commission to repeal or that ordinance and put in place this two seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Now, after reading the twenty-twelve ordinance, it's come to my attention that that was put into place to stop the consolidation of power to either the county executive or the mayor's team. It keeps kind of the, what you always hear in the community, the bill board system happening. While then it gives the mayor the authority, if I read it correctly, to make the decisions on employment and not the department. I voted for this. I want that appeal plus prayer because it are his when it first came before me. But in twenty-twelve, this got created for a specific reason. Usually when an ordinance is on the books, it is created because there was a problem. The Personnel Committee in twenty-twelve came up with this resolution and sent it to the commission with a favorable, favorable recommendation. And I'm just trying to see if we can get this postponed. I know we can't do it tonight and it's got to be through the commission. And sent back to the Personnel Committee so we can actually look at it. So this did get, this did get pushed through really fast. And it's, it's on me. I work a lot. There's a lot on this table right here in front of me. I'm not sure everybody had a chance to read the old, uh, ordinance. That's all I want to say to the commission. If you can, check it out. Read the wording for yourself. In my opinion, we do not need to be consolidating power to one chair. Judge, speaking of that, shouldn't that have gone to the Personnel Committee in the first place before it gets booked? I'm on the Personnel Committee. Yeah, no, I, I didn't see it.
It doesn't have to come out of committee, but if, if it did, if it didn't, you can send it back to the Personnel Committee and let them rework it. Yeah, I understand Commissioner Crook's point and we certainly would, uh, if you don't want to, uh, if you want to postpone it, give it a little more thought, rework it, rework it, that's fine.
So Will, you want to throw it on there?
As I recall. As I recall, it was, it was a house cleaning, uh, or a housekeeping move because the current personnel policy, which has been approved by this commission, takes precedence over it. And it really has no, it doesn't have the authority that it once had because the Personnel Committee, the Personnel Policy is now takes precedent over that. That's the policy we're going by now.
And this, this is in that policy?
In our personnel policy. No, the.
There, there are portions of this that are in that, but I.
Portions?
I, I will get, I will get with Commissioner Crook and yourself and Personnel Policy Committee and we can rework this.
Okay.
If there's some concerns on it, if you want. I don't have any, you know.
I, just, just to get everything clear, like I say, we're all sitting here right now, just to get everything, everybody.
Postpone it or send it to Personnel Policy Committee to, to, to study it, bring it back up.
You can sit down with the, with the, with the committee and it's not a big problem. But I'm just saying, we're getting into budget and I know Will's on a budget committee and I don't want to, I don't want to miss nothing over this budget.
The, the, the object is not to take away that authority that you're talking about, okay? But we will make sure that it's, it's the satisfaction of the commission.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Do we know if, why, why it was? Why was, I know they said it was a cleanup, but why did somebody want this specific ordinance for the cleanup?
I think we're going through that book and just, we went through everything so fast. I think your employee hiring, employee evaluations, employee disciplinary actions, that, that, all of those things are covered in your personnel policy. It's the same thing that's mentioned in here. So that's, that's the basis of it. I can tell you what the basis was because that was a little bit inconsistent. But we, we can clean that ordinance up, maybe even do an amended ordinance on that to where it makes more conformity with the personnel.
Yeah, because, um, I was on the Personnel Committee whenever it went through, I was vice chair. And, um, it was completed, you know, in its entirety. It was a full, it was a full thing. That's why I was, I, I guess I, from my point of view, where I was sitting on, you know, um, and I was secretary for a few hundred minutes and the vice chair. So I just, I was big in that, like, I don't remember, you know, what we did, not necessarily wrong or why it wasn't retrieved.
Any other questions about the second reading? Ms. My, anybody, you have any questions for her? Yes, sir.
My was on the same thing you was talking about. Basically, I want, all I'm just trying to figure out is who, who wanted it cleaned up?
I was going to make the recommendations to clean it up, okay? That was me, all right, because of that language, or that language. It was really, I don't think it took any authority away, even if you repeal this ordinance. I still think you have the day-to-day operations are run by the departments. You don't lose anything of that. But I see your point and, and without repealing it, you just, let's clean it up to where it's in, doesn't not, doesn't, it's not inconsistent with the personnel policy. Because I think some of those things are now not, uh, that are, we, we operate under that policy. And if, the way you read this, it, it appears to me that department heads may have their own ability to use, to use discipline or op, operate outside the parameters of that personnel policy. And that, that to me is inconsistent with what you passed. That makes sense. There's, so there's some inconsistencies, but yet I get your point. You don't want to take away certain things, make it look like you're taking away from department heads and cer, certain elements.
Because the department heads are there for a reason.
I understand that.
It shouldn't be up to an elected official to hire and fire. It should be department head that runs that department.
We will, we will make sure that it makes.
Yes, sir.
You have to follow up on Mr. Crook's point again. I, I, I think the confusion here is that we don't, we don't know what changes this, this repeal makes. So I mean, I, I agree with you with that. I, I'd like to know what exactly, so what, what changes as a result of, as a result of this? That's just my, my clarification in that regard.
Can we not use double adnys?
Mr. Crook, tell us what the purpose of that resolution was in the first place.
Well, for instance, back in twenty-twelve since we're on, oh, my goodness. The, uh, county executive and mayor actually had some problems and some issues with some department heads hiring some individuals.
So he was, he was trying to micromanage, is that, just, just say it, okay?
The commission on this, at that time, seen the problem. The department heads came to the commission. They seen the problem and they put this ordinance into place. The ordinance is in place now, actually probably needs to be in the department policy because the way it's written is written a whole lot better than what this new one is. All I'm asking is for the commission to actually go read it, read both of them side by side and see what you think.
Because there is an inconsistency.
There is.
And, and it depends on which one you read as to which, as to the action you might take. Great. Any other questions on that? Yes, sir.
My other question is, just putting simple terms, right now, the department head of each department does that. Gets their final, uh, yay or nay on hiring, right?
Correct. And will continue to. After going through a, a process through HR to make sure they.
Right.
Meet the parameters and after background checks and all that stuff, yeah.
If they check now, the department head has their final decision.
Correct. Correct. Any other questions on that? Any questions of Ms. Myhan tonight on the, on the second reading? Anybody? Not, we'll move to first readings, uh, and discuss them quickly. Uh, number eight, ordinance two eighty-four, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, rezoning A one to R three on Dalton Hollow, tax map zero one six, parcel zero one six point one five. Any questions of Ms. Myhan? Any explanation you'd like to make on that?
This one is going to be an interesting one because not only are you rezoning from A one to R three, there is a part of this parcel that is outside urban services. And they're requesting for it to be annexed into urban services as well as being rezoned to R three. Now, there has been a question made, well, gee, have we done this before? Yes, you have, back in two thousand and eighteen, along Highway twenty-five, uh, the Lincoln Ship property across from the auto pollution center was rezoned to R three and the vast parcel was annexed into urban services. So it has been done.
Any questions? Thank you for that explanation. Yes, sir.
One thing to add to that, uh, both reaching out to Cliffs and Lees and reaching out to their time in the water department. Everything has been checked out. There would be no extra cost to the county or any extra hardship. Cliff said because of the location of that annex, it would be no issue to pick that trash up as you would anyone else on, uh, Dalton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, ordinance two eighty-five, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, rezoning R one to R three on Dalton Hollow, tax map zero one nine F, group A, parcel zero two seven point oh one. Any questions on that one? Ms. Myhan, do you have any explanation?
Again, this is, he brought three different parcels to be rezoned to R three. I have handed out, uh, the exhibit right here that shows. So all three of these parcels will be joined after it's been rezoned to R three, that way they can, they can build on that.
Do I need to read all the numbers or do I just need to read the books?
You can just read.
Where we at? Twenty-two?
Twenty-two. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Who's still on Dalton Hollow, Chris?
Yeah.
We're on Dalton Hollow, yes.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-two.
You're saying all three portions that are in that title are part of this rezon.
Yes.
So the map we're looking at here, all three that have that title name on them would be rezoned into this.
Actually, the third one that you'll be seeing in the very next, um, ordinance has Kent Coe as the name on the property and that is Zach Taylor.
Yes, sir.
So what the commission needs to consider when they're looking at this, and this need comes from planning with favorable approval, is when you look at all the rezonings that he's asking for, both be annexed, which there's not an R three zoning in the county. So he can't just ask for that to be rezoned to an R three, it has to be annexed for him to get that R three. And then the other three, uh, rezonings, it gives him about a total of eight acres, which, eight acres that can't all be combined into one lot and would have sooner access from Halltown. He could put anywhere from eighty to ninety apartment units on that property if they were all combined as R three. That is the most that could be done on that property, which is what we should be considering always. When we do a rezoning, what is the absolute most that could be done in that property to adding to that area? With a commercial lot right across the street with Matthew Carmen's property there, some existing R three on the other side of Halltown. Planning looked at that, looked at the new intersection to help with traffic flow and thought if we're going to have a large apartment complex which keeps coming before us, that would be an ideal place for it compared to others that planning has said no to.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on to, uh, ordinance two eighty-six dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. Ms. Myhan, do you have any comments or any questions from the commission?
That's that third, uh, parcel that we were speaking of, that has a property name and Kent Coe, that is Zach Taylor. And it does front Halltown.
Questions? Okay, ordinance two eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, annexation to Urban Service District.
And that's that four point, uh, one three acres on that initial parcel. It has to have a separate voting in order to be annexed. And so after it has been rezoned, then it can be annexed. And that's how they said that that needs to happen. Yes, sir.
Um, if, if Mr. Thomas pointed out that there's no R three in the county, we do do the zoning first. Should we not do the annexation first, then do the rezoning? Because it seems like you would be changing the zoning of the property to a zone that doesn't, doesn't exist at, at that, at that moment.
So I'm sure there'd be a real quick fix in putting it at the top of the list and then in the rezoning on the first reading.
And we can do that, Kirk. We can do that. Okay. Good point. Thank you for that. Any questions on that one? Not, we'll move to budget amendments. We're going to talk about those down here. Mr. Gully, would you like to, to address those, please?
Where we at? Sorry. Yes, sir.
Budget amendment.
So, uh.
Would you like to go to the, to the podium?
Depends what you wish.
Everyone can see you.
I don't mind if it depends what you wish.
Everyone can hear you rather than look at the back of your. Rather than looking at the back of your head.
Oh, okay, okay.
But the annoying public can take a lot better where.
If you don't want to, that's fine. As you mentioned earlier, I'll call this, move on. Um, so as we move here in this case, budget amendments, uh, our budget committee did meet, uh, pardon, as I said earlier, um, you'll, you'll notice the word overtime coming up quite a bit here. We had, that's one reason our, our meeting went quite long, uh, in discussing that piece. Um, one of the overtimes you'll see here is, uh, the, one of the overtimes you'll see in that first one there, the sixty-two thousand, uh, nine eighty, uh, nine twenty-eight, um, is, is part of the, our sheriff's department, uh, piece, uh, our sheriff mentioned that he was having to, uh, take on quite a bit more overtime to send employees to take, I believe, uh, correct me, sheriff. Our sheriff mentioned that he was having to take on quite a bit more overtime to send employees, take, I believe, correct me, sheriff, if I'm wrong, takes two employees to send after some of our inmates that have committed crimes at our Turner Correctional Facility and are housed in Nashville or areas of that. So when they have a, when they have a court date, he has to send multiple employees per of those individuals to bring them back here. So that's incurred some overtime costs that he was not expecting necessarily in this case, and those are continuing to cause him to.
Yeah, there's a lot of other things too that got called overtime.
Right.
Vacation, P S services, somebody got a couple of appeals, that's a lot of it.
I mentioned also that this is the first time, I think, in five years his entire staff is completely full. So hopefully, even mentioning that overtime would be lessened going forward in that case. But it was a cleanup of overtime, he believed this would finish him through the year because of that part of it as well. The committee voted to, get this correctly, why don't use double negatives for you in this case, but the committee voted to not favorably recommend the E M A rescue squad thirty-one thousand five hundred on the grounds that it just says P P E gear. We would like to have seen the discussion if, and anyone in the committee wants to speak on this, if I miss a piece here, really wanted to see additional facts of what's being purchased. Thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars is a pretty decent amount of money that we're talking about moving into just spending for P P E gear. My thoughts on P P E gear, you know, I go back to our COVID time, there was a mask and some gloves, that's a whole lot of masks and gloves in my opinion. So maybe that's not the case, there's something else here to it, but we'd like that to come to us before we give a favorable recommendation. Of course, this commission next week can vote to do, if they wish to move on, they can move on, but it's without favorable recommendation from the finance committee. Grants, you'll hear a state, myself, always when it comes to a grant, we need to take, it's money to our county to help something out, but it's not usually a time when those aren't beneficial. This is, will help the sheriff's department as well, he mentioned, if you remember back in our February minutes, we had a, I believe it was ordinance, if I didn't be correct on that, I believe it was a ordinance put into place that the sheriff's department could contract with outside resources to carry mental health patients that need to be carried to wherever from our hospital instead of him having to use his staff and overtime charges. And this grant will cover those costs is what this is. Any questions there?
And also go back to a few of our first of last year, everybody that we've carried in here, who was, that cracked up, that will be reimbursed at one way or another.
I'm sorry about that, I didn't realize that piece from the conversation, so it'd be a reversal grant as well. Any other questions there? All right, that ambulance fund, this is where, we did spend a lot of time here, I want to be clear with this, in February, if you go back to what you mentioned, it's gonna say a little over twenty-seven thousand was moved into EMS out of another line item of EMS, but it's twenty-two thousand, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-two thousand five hundred of that was to cover, was to cover overtime that had occurred from December and January, we moved that in in February. That was meant with a favorable recommendation from the committee with a lot of discussion on the fact that there's a lot of work right now going into the fact that this overtime budget is bleeding in this area, and that's a very small word, it's got a large hole inside, is what it looks like. To make this statement here though, that one hundred thousand should cover the EMS one eighteen fund in their overtime line item, I believe that's one eighty-seven line item if I'm not mistaken there, should cover that line item through the rest of this fiscal year. So it's right now running a little over thirty-two thousand dollars in overtime a month. Now, I know that's a lot of money, don't hear what I'm saying wrong there in this case, that's not all mismanaged pieces, I'm not saying it's mismanaged in any place, in any piece there, there is expected overtime in that budget. So make sure everyone knows that those employees work two, two-week shifts in a month, one of those is a hundred and twenty hours, and one of those is ninety-six hours in that two-week shift. If you think about it, a normal work week is an eighty-hour work week, so there is overtime already built in per employee. So it's running over that amount is what we're saying. It was a lot of discussion, however, this is a king of the favorable recommendation, it had one no, Mr. Ford asked that to be on the record that he had said with a no. The favorable was that it's a, it is a fund that has to be paid, this is dollars that are gonna be going out, there is a problem, yes, we realize that, and this problem needs to be addressed in some way, form, or fashion. However, it is funds that are going, we've got to pay our employees, is why it was favorable in that case, I believe, if I remember that discussion well, anyone want to add anything to that piece in that meeting? In just a second, yes. So if there's no other questions on that one right now, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson, I just want to make sure that I heard correctly, during budget finance in this last meeting, did you bring up the number that it was budgeted for two hundred thousand, and with this, can I put in a four hundred thousand on that line?
A little over, actually, so last, well, if you want to ask, I put those, grab my numbers. So what you were mentioning there, EMS one eighteen, one year ago, the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year budget was two hundred and sixty-five thousand, so that overtime, one eighty-seven line item, when you go look, and I know there's a lot of numbers we're talking about, when you look from about a hundred and eighty-seven, that's the overtime of the one eighteen fund. Okay, so when you look at that piece, that number was right at two hundred and sixty-five thousand in the year, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, so I'm talking a full year's worth of payments there. So in other words, covering those costs that we said would already be there. If or as this one hundred thousand has been put in front of you, would move that line item this year, twenty twenty-three, to a number of four hundred and twenty thousand. Now, I don't want that to all be sounding like that's all extra overtime, so be careful in this conversation. The commission last year did vote for a raise, so there would have been an expected change in that line item already in that raise, so do understand that piece as well. There is a bit of a, that would have already been raised, so it's not all just in bleed in this case, I believe would be the word we, I've heard used around a little bit as well. That line item is struggling, we are seeing that. I said in the EMS committee the other night, heard some discussion, there's, there's a problem. How that problem is addressed is interesting moving forward. However, I will, and I'll make this here again, I mentioned in that meeting, committee meeting, last year we moved six cents, and I know six cents is, for those of you that are new to this, and hopefully you catch on this piece, because we're going to really be talking about budgets in the next few weeks, pennies, last year, if I, let's say, was it thirty-two thousand four hundred?
Somewhere in that area.
Very close to thirty-two thousand four hundred, one penny of property tax brought in thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. We're gonna see a number, to give you an idea, I came home five years ago, a penny was just over eighteen thousand dollars. So that value increases by, well, if we're seeing lands, if we see development on a piece of property like the Dalton Hollow, it's been put in front of us, or right now, whatever its property tax is, if it increases X amount, then it increases the amount of penny value in that case. Kind of give you a little bit of an idea of how that works. But going forward, we look like it's going to increase a little bit more this year, quite a bit less than I've seen in the past, I'm mentioning that going forward, when you see that number, I think there's some, those numbers will be out very soon, more exact, that's a piece that has to come in and get, Mr. Potts has to give us that value. So being clear on that number, there is some expected overtime. There also was an additional amount of money that the commission voted a raise, so that must have been an expected change to that piece. However, this is a hundred and twenty-two thousand is the change that we've added into that overtime budget in this year. That's a large number, I agree, and I hope everybody's hearing that number. I got on that conversation for this same piece, we added six cents to this commission, to this, sorry, to this department last year. This commission voted in the budget last year to move six pennies into this department at thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars per penny, is what I'm trying to get you to understand. They're still able to hold, this is not coming out of one-on-one, this is coming out of their funds, one time, second, in this case, it is still pulling from their funds. In other words, that budget still has some room in it, is what I'm saying. Yes, sir, Mr. Thompson?
So at the estimation, it's the estimation, about a hundred and twenty thousand is the over. At what number would the commission describe that as a mismanagement of personnel?
I don't know if that's our commission's position to describe it as mismanagement.
No, it's not. It definitely is not.
So I think as a commission.
Is it considered, it's all massive.
I'll stand here on that piece as a budget piece, it's a problem that we're seeing, hopefully that problem is getting addressed, and I've said in EMS the last couple committees to hear those pieces, I missed the one in February, but I was at January, it was in that, in March's meeting. The, the question is not necessarily, I don't think, in our hands, but I think it's something we need to be driving in the conversation when it comes to that piece. Yes, sir.
I think it's unfair to say, it's a problem absolutely, describing it as mismanagement, that's not our call, and I think that's unfair, you know. If there are, if the department is short-staffed, that's not necessarily the department head's fault, you know. Ray, just sitting in the saddle a little ago, he's, he's had the full staff for the first time in five years, I don't think any of us would say he's mismanaging his department, he's not. He's had time, time to find people to work. And I think, to his team, that's the case, and EMS too. I don't think it's fair for us to sit here and say mismanaged.
Mr. Thompson?
Please, for those who are only hearing half of what I say, I asked at what point, what number, does this commission then consider it mismanagement? I at no point made an accusation of anyone being mismanaged, I'm just asking at what point? What dollar amount do we look when an apartment is running grossly over on their overtime, and the director is, a supervisor or director is not making an active, reasonable approach of filling those positions? At what point is it mismanaged? I'm not saying it is, I'm asking the question, because very few say it.
Oh, Mr. Ford?
How many hours, some of those guys been working, managed, you can't, what, really, forty?
So that's expected overtime, but there, there's, it must be quite, if you've been in EMS, there's quite a few more, this is folks, here's where we are in this case, it's a dollar amount that is, needs to be budgeted, this kind of, in my opinion. Why not? Because it's payroll to our county employees, we've already paid work, they're gonna work these hours, it's gotta be paid on that part. I'll stand here and say that piece, do I like it? No. Do I want to know why that overtime's running at that piece? Yes. And I would hope that's, that may be our position to say, hey, EMS, and I know they're working that, how do we figure that part? And I think our mayor has already addressed that he's met today with this department. So it is noted that there's an issue, the meetings are taking place, in my personal opinion, that is, our job is to find, is to fund the budget that was funded available. We funded this budget last year, added six cents to it, as I said there in this case, and it's still holding, it's working fine, and we put a hundred and twenty thousand extra into it, and it's still working and rolling. Now, makes me wonder if we, and I brought that point only for this, be very careful if budgets come your way, and pay attention to them carefully, because it appears to me that we overbudgeted that committee last year, or that commission last year, or, we said that, so, we overbudgeted this department last year, to my opinion, that's only my opinion. But if we can hone in these amounts of figures of overtime, then there must have been an issue in our budget. So keep those close to yourself as you pay attention to those budgets coming your way, there has to be some way that's, that it's able to swallow that piece still.
Mr. Crook?
How much money was in the unstaffed medical personnel line? What was the total amount of money in that line? Oh, I think you can, you can see what you're talking about, in this case, that what you're talking about? I mean, I say that we're, no, I actually fancy the words. I don't know what number you're at, where, I've only got the amended version that we have here, so I'm not sure what he's asking. All right, you basically already said really what I'm trying to put out there. It's really just moving from one line item to another line item. It ain't really costing any more, it's already been budgeted for that particular service that the community is receiving. We have to fund the services that the community receives, it doesn't matter, I mean, everybody probably knows what they want to, but people's gotta be paid. And we all need to learn something, the more staff that you have, you can take it from the sheriff's department, the more staff that you have on your roster, the less overtime you're gonna pay. People, it is not one man's fault for people not wanting to work for Trousers County EMS. It is not. People want to work at other places, and that's their God-given right. No man can do anything different to bring people in here. That, it has been nothing but a dart, swinging, bullet dodging, emergency services committee meetings that we've been having, it's been nothing but really, it's also, it makes me look bad even going forward. This is a line item that can be fixed, we're not adding anything to it, the money was already there. We can't help it if people don't want to work, you can't, I mean, it's common sense. That's all I got. There's no more questions on that one hundred thousand, let's move to that next piece, as I said, it came favorable from budget finance, it's a line item that needs to be covered, it's payroll, my opinion, great. One thirty-one highway fund came with a favorable recommendation as well, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, if you'll go look at that piece, it's talking about. Oh, I apologize, it did not come before budget finance today.
It did not.
That is correct, this is the one I looked at a minute ago, and I don't know why it did not come before budget finance.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, it came in after I printed everything and had distributed everything. Ms. Peggy sent it over to me through email, I thought that I had emailed the finance committee, maybe I had not.
I do not remember receiving that. However, if you look at that piece, the commission, the county's budget doesn't put a very, very small amount of money, it's counting on, in this case, if we roll again, I think it would have paid for the favorable, I can't speak to the commission, but I think it would have made a favorable recommendation for the committee.
It is just a cleanup amendment for line items, and they're accepting a state aid project.
That's exactly what I thought it was. It was, I read it over here a minute ago, Ms. Edward and I were reading there a few minutes ago, actually. So one forty-one, this one did come before the finance committee, which, we're twenty twenty-three, one forty-one, oh seven G, G grant in this case, it is a grant that's coming for, if I remember this one correctly, it has, it's gonna go pay some, it's coming as a tech grant through the government piece here in this case, for one of government league's pieces, it's inside a grant there for, that, I can't hear the grant, I don't have a paper, I apologize, but it came with a favorable recommendation. Any other questions on the finance committee piece?
Thanks, sir. Any other business come forth of the commission this evening? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to ask Mr. Brother if he could tell us about the, the board stuff.
I need somebody to make a motion to go into executive session for me to do that, that's my next topic.
I'd like a motion to adjourn the order.
Do we do this before we, here?
Move to go into the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session in a second, any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry?
I have a public comment I want to make before we.
Okay. Can we do that?
Just, just ask everybody, when, when making motions, if there's something we want to vote to him, make a motion to approve, and something we can vote no, something, the motions to deny are just confusing everybody.
I appreciate that point, and from the last commission meeting, I had planned to make that point before we.
By all means make it.
And I will make that point at the, at the next, at the commission meeting, to, not to do the double negative, because in order to vote no, you're having to vote yes, correct? Yes, sir.
I want to speak to that piece myself, because I would disagree with you in that case, and I get your view on it, but I'm not gonna make a motion to approve something that I don't want to approve.
I understand, I understand. We're just trying to simplify the process.
I, sometimes you simplify, but in a place that people don't understand what's being voted on.
Well, and I think there was some confusion at the last commission meeting. We have a motion in a second and an approval to go into executive session, so I can ask the commissioners, Ms. Crowder and Ms. Thomas to remain, but everyone else could, could exit the meeting at this time. And our commissioners stay, commissioners stay, unless you choose not to stay. But any members of the public, we ask you to leave for just a moment. The sheriff can stay to provide protection. The sheriff can stay to provide protection.